Good evening. I'm Bob Mansgally, Chairman of the Falmouth Select Board.
Hello, I'm Mike Renshaw, your Town Manager.
And tonight, we're going to be recapping the Select Board meeting of October 27th, a couple of nights ago. We're taping this on Thursday, October 30th. And Mike, another fairly packed agenda.
Some really fantastic agenda items.
Yeah, some really good, some really good stuff. So we were dealing with some basic consent items, but you know, one thing I wanted to call out was the very generous donation from the Falmouth Running Club for $500 to the Bike Ways donation account for the Cape Cod Marathon, which was another successful year for the Cape Cod Marathon.
Hugely successful, and it was a nice donation.
Yeah, we certainly appreciated it, and we had some appointees to some of the commissions. Frieda Klein to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, and he's a particularly interesting addition. He is a commuter. He does his bike to and from Woods Hole every day, and certainly brings a good perspective to the committee.
Very unique perspective, a scientist.
Yeah, and the Conservation Commission, we appointed Jim McGrath, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Belonging Advisory Committee, Suzanne Thomas, the Historical Commission, Jeremy Kraus. And then we appointed three members to the Substance Use, Commission on Substance Use. You want to give a little background on that, Mike?
Sure, sure, I will. So the Select Board made the decision to add at the previous meeting, some additional members to the commission. They opted to go to nine members to add an additional couple of members to it. So we had three candidates, three outstanding candidates at the last Select Board meeting that the Board voted to appoint in one motion this past meeting. So it's a great addition to the commission.
Yep, Dr. Greg Parkinson, Ryan Walker, and Brian LeBlanc. So yeah, all good, all good appointees. We also dealt with some reports from the School Committee, the Traffic Advisory Committee, and we had a, you know, pretty good report on the downtown parking management plan.
We did, and I wanted to just focus a little bit, Bob, if you don't mind, on the Traffic Advisory Committee. Great presentation, I thought it was important to get out to the community, the great work that that committee does, and the involvement they have with regards to intersection safety and crosswalk safety. So it was a great update from Sergeant Oliver.
Yeah, Sergeant Oliver does a terrific job there, fits it in along with all of his other duties.
Right, right.
So it really was a very good, good, helpful report. Then we dealt with the property at 439 Pinecrest Boulevard, and this was a request from the Falmouth Housing Trust to get $175,000 from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Wanted to give a little talk about that.
Sure, well, I'll hit the highlights. A great project from the Housing Trust. It was a single-family home, and really fantastic condition. The Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group heard a presentation from the Housing Trust representatives. Although the $175,000 request was $25,000 higher than typical, we, the Working Group felt that it was a very worthwhile project. The property is basically move-in ready, so very exciting. It will be deed restricted in perpetuity, and it really adds to our inventory of affordable housing and addresses that need.
Yeah, and it's a great project, it's an existing home, so we don't have to do any disturbance of land.
Exactly.
As you said, it was moved in, and as part of that Working Group, we thought this one was something to consider above the guidelines of $150,000, and I think we're going to maybe work on those guidelines going forward to, you know, show the importance of these types of projects, which don't come around that often. But to the extent that we can help them along, I think we're doing a good thing for the town.
I agree, Bob, and to have some flexibility in that policy, and I think this model of looking at existing homes, for the reasons you stated, not having to clear-cut parcels and have it move-in ready, is, I think, is going to be valuable for the town going forward.
Yeah, so we're looking forward to a good family moving in there. And we also talked a little bit about the Rail to Trail project now. You know, back in 2019, and again in 2023, the Select Board had taken position with respect to the Rail with Trail option, and there's been some discussion ever since then about maybe moving the town towards support for the Rail with, Rail to Trail, I get confused, I'm sorry, the Rail to Trail project. And we discussed that, and you know, we know the importance of the transfer station, and there's still an existing track there. And it seemed like the consensus of the Board was to maybe move towards the Rail to Trail project, but, and maybe draft a letter to the Governor to that effect, but to express our concerns with respect to the rail, maybe put in a new design of a track commensurate with what's going on at the bridges, so.
Correct, yeah, no, great discussion, and good points on both sides of that topic in terms of the significance. I think everybody acknowledges the significance of the existing F2 trail or tracks, but recognizing the cost-effectiveness of placing the Rail to Trail project on that track bed, basically. So, good discussion, and yes, in the end, consensus of the Select Board was to generate that letter to the Governor's Office in support of the Rail to Trail.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great project, it brings in a lot of money, tourism, people love the shining bikes.
$10 to $15 million a year, I think, is the estimate for economic impact here.
Enormous numbers. And then something that I know is very dear to your heart, and something you were involved with in your prior position, a Civic Academy.
Excited, really excited about this program, and it was actually, the Vice Chair, Goldstone, brought this forward, we had the discussion, and basically, the Civic Academy is going to be a great opportunity to educate and make the community members more aware. People sign up for this, in effect. We're still going through the parameters, and whether it's going to be a six- or eight-week course, but it's really a great, kind of a civics 101, where individuals that sign up participate in this monthly, one class a month involvement, where they learn about everything from finance, town financing, to public safety, law enforcement, fire rescue, to public works. So it really gives folks in the community an opportunity to delve in deeply, and get a better understanding of how local government works. And I think, Bob, one of the really, really big things I'm excited about is, with all of the vacancies that we currently have, and we're trying to fill on some of the committees and boards, this gives folks an opportunity to kind of get a really close look at some of the opportunities, and generate perhaps some interest in serving in one of those boards or committees. So I think it's going to be a great way to fill some of those vacancies that we have.
You know, I know it's a great idea, I mean, we came here in 2011, moved here full-time in 2016. I would have loved to have had a Civic Academy at that time to, you know, to learn about local government. Massachusetts, in particular, has some quirks in as regards their local government laws and regulations, but I think this is a great idea. It's going to require some staff time.
Yeah, it'll be, for the most part, staff will be facilitating, teaching, if you will, the sessions, there could be some Select Board involvement as well in some of the sessions.
I hope so.
So, yeah, not a huge fiscal impact, but some staff time, certainly, dedicated towards it, and then, you know, printing the materials and whatnot. But yeah, we're looking to kick that off in the spring, early spring, get through town meeting in November, and start putting the pieces together to bring that to the community. So we're really excited about that.
Yeah, and then we were dealing with something that is very much on the minds of the people in Woods Hole, the, you know, the Taft Playground, and the concerns about, the concerns from some of the residents about having some community involvement and engagement with respect to the park. You want to talk a little bit about that project?
So I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to. So Taft Morris, a resident, child in Woods Hole sadly passed, this playground was set up and built in memory of Taft. It's fallen into some disrepair over the years, it's constructed of wood. Last year, staff did an inspection and found some elements that needed to be repaired. So we made those repairs, but it was put on our capital improvement plan list to take a look at ultimately replacing that entire playground amenity. So as you mentioned, the Woods Hole Village Association and the neighborhood around the playground, very passionate about respecting and memorializing the importance of those elements. It meant something to the family and to the community, and it still does. So we're going to set up meetings with Woods Hole representatives, and make sure that everyone is comfortable before we move forward with the ultimate design of the project, so everybody is happy and comfortable with it.
And the ultimate timeline for getting that done, Mike?
So we're looking at this, the vote the other day, Select Board vote, was to move forward with applying to the CPC for the $650,000 to both design and construct. And talking to the Assistant Town Manager, we're going to be coordinating some meetings in the coming weeks with members of the Woods Hole Village Association in that neighborhood, and we're hoping to sometime in the summer of next year, actually start construction.
Well, I think most of the residents know, but CPC funds can be used for four separate types of expenditure, and recreation is one that is very much supported by the CPC Committee, so we're looking forward to seeing that get done.
It'll be a fun project.
Should be. So we're going to take a break now, stand by, because we're going to have a very, very well-informed guest who's going to talk to us about the Finance Committee.
Excited.
So we'll take a break at this point, and get him all mic'd up. Okay, well, we're back from break, and we are very happy to have Keith Schuegel with us this evening. Keith is the Chair of the Finance Committee, which is a very important part of town government, and as we're approaching town meeting, that's coming up November 17th, I thought it would be helpful, and Mike thought it would be helpful, to have Keith come and talk a little bit about the role of the Finance Committee, how it operates, how it gets things, you know, approved and onto the warrant. So Keith, welcome, and thanks for being here.
Well, thank you for inviting me, Bob, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so how long have you been involved with the Finance Committee?
Roughly 17 years now.
Okay.
And I've been the Chairman for about five years.
And how many members are there altogether?
We have 15 members. We serve three-year terms, and we are the largest committee in the town with the 15 members. We, we're the only committee that is in the legislative branch of the government, vice the executive branch, and that's a design of the Massachusetts state law. They set it up that way.
And the election comes from?
From town meeting members.
From town meeting, right.
So when a new member, when we need to get a new member, there, we have a nomination committee, we appoint, and we come up with a nomination, that person or persons are put forward to the, at town meeting, whether in April or November, and then they're voted on. We're also unique in the sense that members of the committee cannot serve on any other town committee. The only position they can serve is a town meeting member. And again, that is a part of the state law, when we're in the town charter, to that effect as well. It's in, I don't think people know, that the Finance Committee started in Massachusetts in 1870, and it was Quincy. They had trouble with the town's finances, so they started a Finance Committee. And shortly thereafter, it was challenged, and in the courts, and the courts affirmed that there was a need for this, and it was a lawful thing to do. And in 1910, they actually codified it in the legislation, and where they put it in the legislation is between the moderator and the town meeting legislation. That's what determined that they put us in the legislative branch of town government, which is town meeting.
Okay, well, I'll put a plug in for our next show, we're hoping to have Dave Viera be our guest at our next show, who, Dave is, as everyone knows, or pretty much everyone knows, is the town moderator, has been the town meeting moderator for some time, and I think, again, it would be helpful for residents to understand the protocol process for town meeting. So what's the major role of the Finance Committee?
Okay, so what we do is, we receive the budget, we don't create the budget, and that's a, I think Ms. Kuchel, that's his job, and it goes through the Select Board. We receive either the operating budget or the capital budget, whichever one.
So let's talk about that, so the capital budget is November, and then?
Is coming up in November, and then, and just to tell you that usually, a capital item, why is it on the budget, on the capital budget versus an operating budget? A capital budget is, by definition, here in town, anything over $25,000 in value in a five-year useful life. So that's generally the rule that the town follows in creating their capital budget. The operating budget is in the springtime, and we're one of the fewest, maybe even the only town that has two annual town meetings. You can have, you're mandated to have one town meeting and any special town meeting, but we have two annual town meetings. So what we, we receive the budget once the Select Board approves it, and then we have our meetings on that budget. We deliberate, we have roughly nine to 10 public meetings going over each element of the budget, every element, every, if it's an operating budget, every department, the capital budget, every item. Mr. Renshaw nicely comes to every meeting as the Finance Director and the Deputy Town Manager, and you show up as well. And so we hear from each of the town supervisors about the budget. We then, we ask questions of not only the town management, but the town superintendent, or the department superintendents. And our deliberations are basically, we look at generally the probity of what's being asked for, is it legal? Is it reasonable? Is it needed? How does it compare to anything else in the budget? Is it something that maybe there's something more important in the budget? If we're talking capital, we'll, sometimes we'll say, you know, you've got so many things in your 10-year plan, I don't think you can really afford this right now, maybe look at something else, this is a lower priority. We, we don't try to, we're not adversarial, we try to work together, and I think we've done that.
Very professional, very thorough, very professional.
Yeah, I think that we tried to look at this independently. The overall effort is, what's in the best interest of the town? And back to one of the reasons we don't serve on other committees, so that we don't have special interests that we're trying to get forward, to move forward, so we have that independence, and we want to not only be independent, we want to be viewed as being independent, and that's the reason we do that. We make a recommendation, we vote on each of the items, we make a recommendation to town meeting, and it could be one of two things. It's either we recommend it, or we vote indefinite postponement, which in the vernacular is a no, we don't recommend it. Of course, we then, that goes into the warrant. The town meeting, it's entirely up to them to vote, they are the legislators, they are the appropriators, they decide, and they're the ones that make the decision. We are there to defend what we say, and at town meeting, if necessary. We have a few of those now that we're going to be doing in this capital budget this year. We voted indefinite postponement on a few items. So very seldom, I will tell you on the operating budget, that we vote indefinite postponement. And when you think about it, the operating budget is all virtually 96%, 98% fixed. You pay the bills, you pay the salaries, you pay the, keep the lights on, the telephone, you know, working the chemicals for the sewer, for the water treatment, so there's really not a lot to question. In that case, what we look at is, have they asked for the same money over and over again, and how much has not been spent? The operating budget is an annual appropriation, it lapses at the end of the fiscal year of June 30th. The capital budget articles, they go on, they have a longer lifespan.
How long?
Good question, that's, in the charter, it's three years. They're not held to that religiously. When our annual audit comes up, they do look at that, the independent auditors, but they don't get hard on it and say, you have to do this, there's a times that we have money that a project's ongoing. But we do look at that, and we do question the town about, hey, it's time to pull this, to claw the money back if you're not using it, or if you're done with the project.
I know Ed Santao was very helpful in that regard over the past couple of years.
Top-notch, top-notch. And if, when you look in the warrant, Mike started this, and is very good about it, listing all the old articles that they're getting money out of, and we were, we were very religious on that, the Finance Committee looks at that very closely, and Mike's been very good, and you'll see a list of all the articles that are being used to fund, of money that they can repurpose and bring it back. You'll find probably, and I can't, I don't have the figure in front of me, but it's well into the millions of dollars that they claw this money back, because it's, it's not used, it's just sitting there in appropriation. You don't have that with the operating budget, because that, as I say, they lapse at the end of the year, and that money goes, is a turnback to the operating fund, or our free cash.
Free cash.
At the end of the year, yeah.
So I'm always impressed at the detail and the investigation that the members do with respect to the budget. How does that, how does that play out? Do the members say, I'll take this group and look at that? I mean, you make the decisions as to who's going to investigate which items, and so departments, and so forth?
Exactly. So when the operating budget, it's pretty much, I try to keep people on, I do the assignments of the various departments. We try to have some consistency, because some of the departments are more complicated than others, and so I will assign somebody, say, to DPW Fleet, or to the Water Department. I try to keep them on that for a couple years, a couple, three years, because there's a high learning curve, and they become familiar with the operation and the payments and the expenses and things, and the department superintendent. But then, after a point, I change them out, so that they don't become too familiar. And what they, we try to avoid becoming advocates for the department, we want to maintain that independent look that we're giving it, and we don't become kind of part of the process. You know, and now with the capital budget, I also do assignments, and some of it's based on experience of the people, you know, on the committee, how much experience they have in an area. We have an individual that is, was on the New York school system.
State New York, where I come from.
Yeah, and so he's very good, so I put him on the schools, and any articles that deal with the schools, and he has a lot of familiarity with the operating budget of schools, and how it works, and what you need. So we have people like that on the committee. So that's, that's how, essentially, and then you asked about, what they do is, they go out and they meet with the superintendent. Now, they can do that in person, they can maybe, if it's not a large budget, or a large article, they can do it by phone, and they go over everything, and.
Item by item.
Item by item, every item in the budget, we go over, and we also look at where the revenue's coming from. So we will question the town, you know, we'll say, wait a minute, you have a good revenue source here with the embarkation fees, this looks like a good candidate for that, you're not using it, why don't you use it? And a lot of times, you know, they'll, Mike or Peter will say, yeah, we didn't think about that. And so we say, well, let's tap into that source. So that's essentially what we do, and then that individual, Finance Committee member, will come back, they will make a motion at our meeting, when they're on the, and I do the agendas, and they'll, they'll make a motion to move an amount for, say, the Water Department, X amount, and then we'll debate it with the management there and with the department superintendent.
Keith made a point, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead, Mike.
Keith made a point, Bob, that it's not an adversarial process by design, and he's absolutely right. I mean, I've never had the opportunity to work with a more professional bunch, and going into this process, it was my first time working with town meeting and a Finance Committee. My point is, is not only is it not adversarial, it's collaborative. So we bounce ideas off one another, like Keith said, mentioning that embarkation fee concept, and when there's opportunities to become more efficient, more effective, yeah, we bounce ideas off one another, and I think it's just a great process.
Well, analogous to the federal government, there's checks and balances, and this is a perfect example of checks and balances, that's inherent in the charter, and inherent in how, you know, the committee operates with, with management, with administration, and with the Select Board. So there's, you know, very good checks and balances, all to the benefit of the town, because you're watching where the town's money's going, and that's, that's your job.
It gives it an independent look, a kind of a third eye, and they've made the comparison that we're like the State Ways and Means Committee. We get the budget, we analyze it, we look at it, we give it that independent look. And it's not to say that you're doing anything wrong, it's just to say, let's look at this from a different perspective, and we try to have our historical hat on, you know, we have some institutional knowledge. We have a couple of people on the committee, they've been, not only they're long, you know, residents here for their life, they've been on the committee for 20 years, and they, sometimes something will come up, and one of them will say, wait a minute, we did that 15 years ago, and it didn't do this, or it was this. And so that institutional knowledge on the committee is very good.
Well, that brings me to a question, and we're going to have to wrap it up in a couple of minutes, but how would someone get, if they wanted to become part of the Finance Committee, what would they do? How would they propose themselves as a nomination, or how does that work? What would someone do if they wanted to be part of the committee?
I'm glad you asked that, because that's something that's hard to get a handle on, because we don't operate within the normal committee process, like the town, where they submit a resume to the front office, and it comes before the Select Board, and you all interview, and you make your appointments. This is done through the committee. So what happens is, is somebody would, if they have interests to get ahold of me, then I'll talk with them, I'll say, give me a little one-page kind of resume, and we're not looking for people that are CPAs or finance people necessarily, we want people with a lot of different experiences. So it's, that shouldn't limit them, that I'm not qualified. We do have two CPAs on the committee, so that is a good thing, we have people with.
Your Vice Chair is a CPA.
Vice, and I'm a CPA, so we're, we do have that finance experience, but we, we look for other experience, just general town experience, people that have businesses here, things like that, practical experience. So they would get the resume to me when we have an opening, we would, I put together the nominating committee, which is usually a couple members of the committee, and the moderator, he's involved in this. And so then we go over the resume, and we talk with the person, you know, why do you want to be on it? What's the purpose? And I have very specific questions I ask, and one of them is, you know, when I ask why, and some will say, well, I want to forward this agenda. Well, that's exactly what we are not looking for, is we're trying to maintain that independence, and I think that's important for the public to know we're independent, and to show we are. So that's how they would do it, and then, when we have the one or two openings, whatever it might be, then that name is put forward at the town meeting. That's the first article you'll notice, appoint town officials, and that is based on, or that is solely for the Finance Committee to appoint members, and then the name's put forward and they're elected, and then they serve.
Okay, well, thanks, Keith, that was very informative, helpful, and I'm sure people will find that very useful going forward, as to the role, the important role that the Finance Committee plays in town government.
Okay, thank you for having me, I appreciate it very much.
So thank you. So Mike, I think we'll, we're going to actually be here in another, next week, because we'll be having a meeting back-to-back.
November 3rd.
We don't do that off in November 3rd, and we'll be here during that week to recap what happens on November 3rd.
Looking forward to it, Bob.
Me too. Okay, thanks very much, and thanks, FCTV, and all the staff here for giving us the opportunity to present this report. Thank you.